Good evening, everyone. Welcome into the Hudson City Council Meeting for June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Call a meeting to order? Approved the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, Mayor Council, I have two additions for you guys to consider adding to the agenda. One would be Resolution one five three one seven. And the other is Resolution one five three one eight. And we emailed some communication to you uh between when that pack went out and today and then those there's copies of that information on your desk tonight as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
I will second the.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Not call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carry. Uh, looks like we do not have a. For vacation tonight. I think that'd be nice, uh, since we'll have a moment of silence to remember that uh D-Day was just a few uh two days ago. When they uh. Stormed the Normandy Beach, so uh remembering that and we'll have a moment of silence. Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight?
Well, I want to say something. The flags that are adorning Main Street.
Yeah.
They look wonderful, you know?
Looks good.
And it just makes you smile when you drive through our town. So kudos to those who put those up.
Uh, public comment, uh, citizens addressing the council. Is there anybody that wants to address the council? Uh, ready uh approval of minutes? We have the workshop. Meeting of May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And the regular meeting minutes of May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve them? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? Not call motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. Content consent agenda. Uh, we do have um is approval of party in the park event. In Library Square on July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. And uh issuing transit merchant license to Virginia High Tower of TNT fireworks from June eleventh. Through July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one in the Walmart parking lot. And C is a claim and appropriation and contract payments.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, carried. Uh, communication request discussion. Discussion on the filing vacancy.
Can I head over here? Um, Mayor Council, I added a kind of revised memo uh on your desk. I'm gonna walk you back through it just because. Um, a couple of changes from what this was set up that I kind of want to uh to discuss. First off, um, I did form a statement. His letter to the mayor and I think so. Um, I'll maybe give him all the time if he wants to address that uh at the end of this conversation, but he is. His last day as a council member, it will be July fifteenth. Um, and so technically our vacancy will exist on the city council come July sixteenth. Um, and so part of this conversation tonight is getting council starting to think about how are we going to fill that position? First off, I want to highlight um what our charter says. Um, the charter does address um filling the vacancies. Um, one occurs. Um, obviously, this would be more of a voluntary one with uh with uh with Brandon. His residency residency within the community being up. Um, but when there is one, um, the council needs to by a resolution declare that a vacancy exists. Um, and then forthwith appoint another person to fill that position. And it talks about, I'll touch on this a little bit later about, you know, how that appointment um will take place. Um, and in our situation, since uh there's still over one year, um, Brandon's term actually, it's obviously three and a half years on that. Uh, we're gonna have to have a special election to fill that. And so it's really kind of a two-pronged approach. Um, first off, we're gonna have a vacancy. We'll have to declare it. You'll have to appoint somebody in an interim. For an interim period of time to fill that vacancy. Until you can have a special election to permanently fill that um that position. Um, and this is the one thing that um staff missed and will probably admit that it was our fault. We missed it. Luckily, we caught it um before we got too far along. Um, and this is more of a correction we'll have to make when we go back and and change the charter. Um, the charter's actually what I have on a um, especially, it was on my phone. It sounds like before, right? It's why my wife told me that. Please stop bumbling something out there or something like that, you know?
So you're supposed to pick up Brad and Abe.
Should have noted that um within that section of filling the vacancy that it should refer back to section four point oh two that talks about special elections. Cause the one thing that we missed um is that in our charter, it talks about. When we have special elections, um, that uh primaries would have to be included within that special election if 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 one falls off. So basically what that means is if we have more than two people filed for that vacancy. That will basically. Cause the need for us to have a primary election before we can have our special election. Um, which actually kind of drags up the process a little bit longer. So some of what we're trying to figure out is. From what the state has about in the last couple of years, they have uniform election dates. So they pick five dates throughout the year of which you can have special elections. Like it's the second, second Tuesday in February, there's a date in March uh or May, a day in April, day in August. And then in November. So the soonest we could have an election would be November. Now, what we're trying to get clarified is, okay, can we have that primary? Before November? We don't believe we can. So we think the earliest the primary could take place would be November second. Which would then trigger the special election to take place in February of twenty twenty-two. So when we talk about having to to fill that on an interim basis, that person could start as early as July sixteenth. It would be in an interim position until potentially February eighth or the middle of February. Um, and so we're trying to get some clarification from the Secretary of State when it comes to primaries and exactly when we have to. We believe it has to be, it can only be held on one of those five dates. With the most nearest one being November, um, and the next one after that being February. But we're trying to get clarification from the Secretary of State to make sure that we're interpreting both our charter and the state statutes. Um, correctly. And so that's kind of a a brief summary. It might kind of walk us through the process of where we need to go from here. So in our next council meeting, there will be a resolution that staff will put together, um, seeking your approval that will basically state. There is going to be a vacancy within the city council effective July sixteenth. Um, and then within that same resolution, um, we'll be, you'll be directing staff to begin the process of establishing a special election to fill that vacancy. Um, as we noted with uh Brandon submitting his formal resignation notice, um, we kind of note the dates of when some of these things are gonna take place. Um, and so once again, that resolution will be on the June twenty-second city council meeting. Really, starting June twenty-third, the process will begin um to fill that position on an interim basis. And part of our discussion tonight needs to be, what process do you want to use to fill that interim position? Um, July sixteenth, um, is probably the earliest time that interim position would assume office. Um, really, it'd be up to the council. You'd have to have probably a special meeting on the sixteenth to appoint that person, or you could do it the Monday or Tuesday. Um, after that, I suppose Mark, you haven't really talked about, they could probably even wait to that second meeting in July to appoint you. You just have a. You know, a week and a half uh window where the we have just four council members. And so, and then starting July twenty-seventh is when filing would open for the special election. Uh, this is where it gets tricky, where we don't have a whole lot of answers right now. If two people file for office, then we know the special election will take place on November second. Um, the ballots we had cast and that will determine who's gonna fill that vacancy. If more than two file for office, we believe we then have to have a primary, cause that's what our charter says. And based off of the dates and when you can have special elections, we believe the primary will be equal be in November. With which will eliminate, you know, however many candidates we have down to two. With then the regular election or the general election, however you wanna call it, would take place on February eighth. We believe that's, those are the dates, but except we're trying to get clarification on that and I should know that by our next council meeting. If only one person files for office, the council can cancel the election and basically appoint that person. To fill the the vacancy. Um, so that's kind of where, you know, we'll have a better idea of exactly what the process will be. Um, this is the next couple of dates are more or less, you know. You know, notice that we have to get to the the county either and when that some people would take place. Um, and as I noted, you know, our either the primary or the general on November second with the potential second election on February eighth.
If nobody files, does the point use to write it out though?
That's a good question.
Mark? Well, I predict you have to take some additional action because your initial appointment, I think, is gonna be only for that interim period.
Sure.
Hey, Mark. Talking to your mic. This blocks.
How's that? So I think that you'd have to take a second action, um, because your initial action's only gonna be for appointing that person in the interim. And you need a second action then for the appointment for the remainder of the unfilled term. Would be my opinion. It might be the same person. It might be someone different, but. You'll cross that bridge when you get to it.
Okay.
So really, kind of whatever happens in that July twenty-seventh, the August tenth is really kind of kind of somewhat drive, you know, wherever you go in regards to those processes. Um, but as I noted earlier, one of the things that you're gonna have to do is look at. Filling that position on the interim until you can have that election. And so that's really where I wanted to have discussion tonight is what's the process? The council's gonna wanna do to fill that position on the interim. Um, because that can start as early as after our next council meeting. You know, I put in there, you know, my suggestion was just a suggestion coming from me and that you consider doing something like a. Uh, a council or candidate interest form similar to what we do with our um appointees to other committees and commissions. Um, but you don't have to. As I noted in my memo, this is a little bit unique than some of our other appointments where when it comes to committee appointments, the mayor brings forth the name. Of which the council has to sign off on. When there's a vacancy on the council, it is a responsibility of the full council to appoint that position. So that doesn't fall on the mayors really before remaining council members. They have to make the determination on how are they going to fill. That vacancy. So it's not the mayor bringing forth the name. Um, although he could, um, but like I said, that's the discussion for the council tonight. What's the process you wanna use? To fill that vacancy. Except, you know, the alternative I said was, well, you could have. Four or five of you bring names to the next meeting and then hash out a debate on who you want to appoint. You could easily do that. My suggestion would be. Um, you know, just based off of some past experience, who had no school board did this, you know, they did a. Candidate interest form. You could do interviews if you wanted, um, but that's really, I guess, the direction I'm seeking from the city council. So we can at least begin. Point something together for you to to help, to help you out. I would recommend. Um, that you formally don't appoint that person until Brandon's off the city council. But it's really up to the four or five of you on whatever process.
Um, been having. A few conversations with Matt over this year. What we should do, uh, paying that, we kind of, you know, came up. I I kind of like the deal of doing an interest form. So we throw it out there and we don't, you know, get any, everybody that's interested in the position that they all. Uh, bring forward what they can offer the council. So that, you know, that would be my.
So how long do you like that? What's the, what would be the ending date on something like that?
We kind of talked about, what, two weeks, Matt?
Well, I think that's the discussion, because um I don't think it'd be appropriate for us to start, I mean, obviously, the words are gonna be out there, but. Ideally, you pass the resolution out to June twenty-second pre-aid. We probably have on that resolution, the process that's gonna be used to fill it on an interim basis. Um, starting June twenty-third, that process will begin. So if it's the interest forms, I would say, okay, starting July twenty-third, we'll take them. I would recommend that you have an end date. Um, and then, you know, you don't have to now. You can, um, determine, like, say, do you want to do interviews? Uh, but you have to remember, this is the full council body, so that will be open to the public, but that may be a good, kind of like a candidate forum. Um, but I guess that's, like I said, the direction I'm looking for from the council, um. And, you know, what your thoughts are and what that process should be, you know? My recommendation is that if you have an opening, you give a window of, okay, over these next two weeks, we're gonna take. Um, quote unquote, applications for interesting people to serve on them.
So you say at that time, and the discussion of who would be uh possibly appointed would be on July thirteenth then?
Yep, you could do that. Um, like I said, I, my preference would, this is just my suggestion, it's up to you, is that you would wait till Brandon is off the council. I mean. You guys could easily allow Brandon to have a say in it. But it's. It's up to you guys, like I said, whatever that process is. There's nothing that says he can't participate. My recommendation is that you make those appointments when his term is off.
I like the idea of the interest form and application. It'll, that's a. A good view.
Um, after the two weeks is up or whatever we determine, do you wanna do interview, like, name three finalists and do interviews or? How do you wanna earn? Do we wanna have it where a majority, just a simple, like, three to one vote passes it or a full unanimous vote or is that up for debate or what?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't touch on that. Um, the charter, and I think this might even state law, states that it's the responsibility of the council to vote and approve the appointment. If it's a tie vote, the mayor makes the appointment.
Okay.
That makes sense? So the mayor would have a vote, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark? Correct? You have a vote in that initial appointment, and if it happens to be a tie, then he would be the one who essentially breaks the tie.
So what you're saying is if it's a two-two, then here it is placed?
Yes.
Okay.
And 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 here's the suggestion too. If you do the the interest form, you do a two-week period, you can see what names come in. And then you can make a determination on how you wanna go about. If you get five names, six names, you wanna interview all six, I mean, you can make that determination once you get the. Once those come in. There's nothing that says you have to do an interview. There's nothing that says you have to do a. Interest form. That's really what this discussion is for. So let me staff and kind of help prepare whatever method it is you guys wanna.
I think.
And really, you know, we're gonna be doing that resolution on June twenty-second, so if you wanna spend two weeks thinking about the. The process, you could, you could give me that direction at our, at our next council meeting uh as well, so.
And and. And I think a lot of it's gonna be dependent on. How many people are interested?
Right.
If you get twenty people, that's one scenario. If you get four. You know, that's a lot more manageable as far as interviews, et cetera.
I think we had a lot, lot to digest here, so I would think.
And I think the other thing as well would be, um. If you wanna do an interest form, is there anything um in particular that you would like for us to ask on that interest form? I think the one I put in the packet was. It's fairly generic. It's what we, it was similar to what the school district views. It's similar to what we've used, which basically it asks, you know. You know, are you interested in running? Um, how many years have you lived in the community? What other um committees have you uh served on? Um, you know, if you wanted to throw in a couple of other questions, you could easily do that. Um, like I said, it's really up to. The currently the five of you. Um, to determine what the process is that you wanna use to fill that vacancy. I'm here just to try to help steer the ship, but then the day you guys have to be the captain to kind of.
Well, the uh, this example you gave is basically a generic example for any commission, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm not sure why that wouldn't be sufficient beyond, you know, that's my opinion. I also think that uh basically with Brandon leaving on the fifteenth and the last council meeting is on, or the the council meeting before he leave is on uh. The thirteenth, I would think to uh get a. Uh, a vote to Brandon to be on on uh would be uh absolutely within the uh confines of that decision. I mean, what we're gonna do, so. Which that gives us a five, a five uh vote system, or then we have a four vote system if he's gone, we can do that.
That's, like I said, once again, that's a decision up to. To the council and how you want to to do that. You know, and if that's the way you wanna go, that's fine. I'm I'm playing devil's advocate here. You've got an individual who's gonna be. Helping make a vote, who's not no longer gonna be a part of.
I understand.
The community, but that's, like I said, that's up to the five of you guys to determine that.
I said, I'm I'm thinking that Brandon would like to have someone that he would, you know?
And this isn't a commentary on Brandon at all, but like I would rather have it just the four that are hanging out in town.
Say it again, please.
It's not a commentary on Brandon at all, but I would rather have it be the four remaining councilmen.
And I would also agree to that.
Well, I think uh we have a lot to digest, like I said. I I think that uh Matt gave us some good options and I think we can uh kind of. Think of them all it over and and come back and and you always can contact Matt if.
It's, you know, if you were, if you wanna write down a couple of notes, I think first off, you have to determine what's the process that you wanna use. Um, to do that. What are your timelines? Um, to address that, and then when do you want to make that appointment?
When, when do you think you'll get the ruling from the state, man?
Well, you know, I'm hoping in the next couple of days that will give us a. Like I said, I I feel, I think we feel pretty confident that um the primaries can be held in November and there's enough. Candidates who file then with the the general, wanna call it a general election being held in February. My worry is that I saw a lot of language that type called primary elections taking place in August. No, we can't meet this August. So my worry is that the primary would be in August of twenty twenty-two. So you would have a. Essentially a, a one-year appointment on an interim basis. I hope I'm, I think I'm wrong on that. I think the November and February is probably where we can. Fall on, but that's why we we wanted to reach out just to. To make sure we're, our assumption is correct with the. The Secretary of State, so, like I said, I think those are the three things, you know, the process, what the timelines are, and then when you wanna make those. Um, those appointments, so, you know, this is. I may be pulling my hair here, Mark. I don't know if appointment can be made to fill the vacancy until the vacancy is actually up. And maybe that's something we have to. Clarify, if you understand what I'm saying.
No, I guess I would agree with that.
But we have to.
Right.
So the basis that we're working on right now is relatively transparent to the public, so. I guess, uh, you know, what you say is. Truth. And transparent, so if its appointment is after. Truth and transparent, so if its appointment is after uh councilman uh. Brandon would leave, that's the way it's uh set up, then I guess I I probably can't argue with that. But I just felt that that would.
No, and like I said, and that's, trust me, that's something we've had a conversation with about, I think we just need to clarify is. When does that actual action take place? It doesn't mean that up until that action takes place, that Brandon. Couldn't be involved, but I'm not sure if you can actually vote um fill in the vacancy until there's actual a vacancy has occurred, which would be. At the earliest would be July sixteen, and so when you think about that, it's okay. For taking these applications, the applications are due by July ninth, do we have a special meeting on July sixteenth? The day after Brandon's last day to fill the vacancy, or do we? You know, and some of that might come down to um how many applications you have, and whether or not you wanna do interviews and.
Well, is it that, you know, we have the, our regular council meeting the twentieth, so. Does it say that we have to fill it?
We have the thirteenth and then the twenty seventh.
Sure, I'm sorry, yeah. So we could wait till the twenty seventh or do we have to?
Because I think the, I think the statute says to fill the vacancy.
The earliest.
Earliest possible.
Possible. So we could do it on the twenty seventh, correct?
Good, I mean, I.
Or if you wanted to have a special meeting, you know, between the sixteenth and the twenty seventh, that's up to you.
Well, we can make that decision at a later date anyway, can't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you, if you guys.
Might be interested in the position.
So like I said, there's. There's a lot, um. For you guys to kind of digest and, you know, we'll have the formal action to start the process at our next meeting. Like I said, I think you need to just be thinking about what's that procedure that you would like to see. Play out to have that, and and we'll have some more information between now and. And June twenty second to share with everybody, so.
And you'll have clarification from the secretaries.
Secretaries stay down actually when those dates can be held, and then we'll have clarification on exactly when that appointment.
If you get that earlier, like the council will hold that.
Yes, definitely, because I think that's fair to you guys, so you can, you know, have that a part of your plan, so.
Alrighty, thanks, Matt. Like I said, if you guys think of anything else or questions that you have, um. Matt probably is more than happy to accommodate questions, so. We have no unfinished business, new business, um setting council workshop for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. At four P M. to review water, wastewater rate spend. Entertain a motion to approve that workshop.
I'll make a motion to set that meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to set that workshop for July thirteenth. Any other discussion? If not, call a motion, all in favor? Opposed, carried, uh then we have to settle council workshop for July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. At four thirty P M. to review the two thousand twenty audit report.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Brandon to approve that workshop. Any other discussion? Call a motion, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Alrighty, uh we have uh resolution number one five three one seven. Amending the two thousand twenty one seasonal temporary pay grid.
Yeah, I mean, on council back in, I think it was December, um the council approved the. The seasonal temporary pay grid for the twenty twenty one season. Um as probably is not a surprise to most of you, we've had some struggles and trying to fill. Um a lot of our seasonal and temporary pay positions, and in particular mainly at the aquatic center. Um, like I said, I don't think that's uh anything unusual um within the community, but. I guess one way to hopefully try to entice um filling some of those positions, I had. Brought forward to the council for your consideration and a proposed amendment to our pay grid, essentially what that does is add a. Add a dollar an hour to every one of the positions um within the seasonal pay grid. Um it also adds a couple more steps at at the low end of our pay grid system, which is mainly um your entry level positions. Um which it might be your concession workers, your lifeguards, um law moors. We are experiencing situations where we, we hire somebody and a few days later they leave because they're able to make more money. At at a, at another location, you know, I'm gonna be honest, you know, part of our wage study for. Twenty twenty one is to review this whole plan, um and in totality, uh to to kind of view where we're at. I think we're behind in in a lot of it, I I don't know if the dollar an hour. Um would even put us in the middle or ahead, but I think it will help a little bit. And at the very least, I think it sends a message to those that we've hired that. We're thankful that you chose us when you could probably go and make more money working someplace else. Um and hopefully it maybe entices some people to either stay or to reconsider coming and uh. And working for, working for us, like I said, I think it it helps, it's not a. Do all be all type of emotion, but I think it would help us in trying to fill some of those positions, I don't know. I think the biggest one right now, because we're still looking to fill it, is at the aquatic center. You know, Saturday, we didn't have the zip line open just because we didn't have enough lifeguards to where we could do that, um so that's just.
So how many, how many are we short, Matt?
Well, the last count I had, we had about fifty five employed at the aquatic center, um past years, we're usually employing seventy to seventy five. So, and some of that is, you know, most of the time we're hiring high school kids who, you know, they're. So it's the summertime and they got activities and sports going on and they're trying to, you know, so that's why you have kind of that large number is to be able to plug in. Those that uh can't uh, you know. Fill those slots when people are gone and going on vacation and and doing their activities, um so we've been able to make it work. Um but obviously we've got some concern that. You know, and I'm talking a lot about the aquatic center, I think we've been lucky in being able to fill a lot of our maintenance positions, both in public works. And in parks, but I think there is a concern as how long are we gonna keep some of these, um. Like I said, with where we're at, like I said, I don't think this is gonna solve all our problems, but I think it will, will help.
I mean, the aquatic center isn't just our issue, that's all over, I mean, there's not enough lifeguards certified and. Ready to do that job.
Yeah, and, you know, luckily we've got um people who can do certification, and so we're able to. Kind of do some training as we're bringing in uh new people um to to get them up to speed, but you know, that presents its own challenges as well, because. To find the time to do that and.
But I think some of the neighboring towns had trouble even opening their pools because they couldn't find people to work.
Yeah, like I said, and that's what I, you know, this isn't just us, this is across the board, you know, I know of other businesses in town who've had to close for. Portions of a day or a day because of of not having um the staff available, um. You know, and if, like I said, I don't. You know, the reality is if we don't have enough workers, there's certain services we just can't provide to the community, and I'm not saying this is gonna address all of that, but it helps.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve the pay grid raise. And the other discussion. Motion, all in favor? Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
We have resolution number one five three one eight. Uh resolution supporting capital improvements at the Hutchinson area transportation service building. Otherwise known as HATS.
Yeah. Uh you may recall, we've identified in our uh five year capital plan. Um some upgrades to that facility, once again, that's a shared facility between the county and the state um and the city. And I know um John Brunkhorst at the county has kind of taken the lead to to try to get this on the. Um within the bonding dollars um for it to be um considered for financing, and one of the things that. And I think the application is due by the eighteenth of June, that's why we kind of rushed to get this on, one of the things he found out was that. There's a need for a resolution of support from both the county and the city um for us and and going to to get that money, and so. Um that's why that was asked to, for your consideration tonight, like I said, it's. To me, you know, we talk about shared resources and doing things a little bit different, this is the perfect example of that, you've got three units of government that are using one building to. At the end of the, really save taxpayer monies and that, you're, you've got the state, the county, and the city all kind of contributing to one facility that helps. You know, house all those resources, and so, I think it's a good project, it's a good opportunity to potentially buy down any costs that we may have. In it, um. Would recommend the council to approve the the resolution of support.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that. Motion by Chad, second by Brandon. Prove resolution number one five three one eight, any other discussion? If not, call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Carry governance, we have uh library board minutes from April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one. And uh Hutchinson Economic Development Authority Board Minutes from April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one. Well, Chief Jefferson told me that he really didn't have nothing to talk about tonight, but uh he's still here, so. Does anybody have any questions or comments to Chief Jefferson? Alrighty, um. Mark?
Nothing else today.
Nothing? Mary, how about you?
Um, well, the library has a lot of programs for our kids this summer, so if you wanna get involved, just. Get over there, get on, get online and see what's all out there for the kids for the summer. You know, the library's open and the park is beautiful, so head on over. Um also, music in the park will start in August, so that will be a nice addition this year. And the pool's open, and that's wonderful, hot weather, everybody wants to be there. And last but not least. Thank you for getting the depot painted, it looks awesome, I get a lot of compliments on it. So, thanks to those workers who are over there and getting it done. That's it, stay cool, everybody.
Dave?
You know, this has been such a short meeting, I can't think of anything, I don't want to say anything, the only thing. The only thing I can say is is that I'm thinking, I'm not thinking, but a person called me if that lives on the Crow River. And they are concerned about the uh, the level of the crow. And uh I, you know, I don't know if there's anything that can be done uh to raise the river, and I don't believe there is because of the uh. Uh the dam is the way it's built, so uh typically I'm uh kind of under the impression that uh. You know, when we're having a drought and a lot of rains, we're gonna get a little river, and uh people are apparently uh hitting rocks with their props. And whatever else is their landing, I think there'll be some further discussion on that from that coalition that is kind of push, trying to push that, but I. As I talked to the guy today, uh and after the conversation, I got to thinking, well. You almost have to build a dam in front of the dam to build the crow back up uh, back up river again, so. It didn't look like an applicable thing, but maybe there's something that can be done, and I know, you know, with the work that wants to be done on Campbell and Otter and. And the water clarification and stuff that's coming up down the line, I'm sure that doesn't have anything to do with uh ra- raising the uh level of the river uh from the. Uh Highway fifteen bridge back up uh to the west, so it's just a, it was a comment and a conversation today, so. Um if you hear it, why, you're gonna hear it, so someone will be talking to me, I'm sure, so, just uh heads up.
You know, I'll just add, it it's not a new conversation, I think I've heard about it since I've been here. Um you know, some of that goes back to when the dam was put in. Um and I think it's important for all of us in the community to remember some of the reasonings behind the current dam that's in place. Um the previous one was in rough shape and was close to.
Sure.
No longer being in place, um when the rock dam went in, actually, you know, from, I wasn't around, so the, I'll. Gladly admit this is mainly hearing from those that were here, um that opening has gotten wider. And the height of the dam is eight inches lower than what it was back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Now, that was a decision made by the D N R, not the city. And my understanding is that the city, the local hydrologists, those that were involved, had recommended keeping that dam at the same height. Um but that was a. Overwrote, if you wanna say, by uh the higher upset, the the D N R, now. So that's one thing to keep in mind, another thing is, um how has the flooding been in town with the replacement of the dam? How's the fishing been from what we've heard in the community with the replacement of the dam? Um and then I think the third thing is, how's the weather been lately, which I think plays a, plays a factor into that as well, and so.
Well, I believe the D N R is involved in the conversation already, is is what I could, uh what the gentleman told me, so, yeah.
And so I think, one thing too, when you think about it, if you, you know, we've used the example of the kind of the bathtub. You know, the whole, the water drains down has gotten bigger, so with the, the way that that dam was changed, and so there are gonna be some hydraulics that. That change, that impact the overall river, I think some of the work that we're doing with that Lakes River Basin study. Will improve some of that, but I also think we need to be mindful of, outside of those two rain days we had two weeks ago, we haven't had. Any moisture in quite some time as well, too.
Like I say, just, someone's working on it, they're talking about it, so that's uh.
No, that's fair.
Uh actually, yeah, well, we knew this was coming because I, I talked to the gentleman too. And of course, I talked to Matt and Kent and, and uh Kent's putting something together for us, some numbers and. So, we are.
Well, I thought that was the place to start with. Staff, so.
Yeah, I did stock talk to Kent today and.
Thank you.
And actually, uh him and Matt were talking and seeing what direction we should go to, go in here, so. Alright, anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Mister Chatterbox, let's hear what you have to say.
I uh promised a couple people who were asking questions and also the uh leader, if you're listening, thanks for the. Free publicity lately, that I would offer a statement here, so, um yeah, it's no secret that the beggars are moving. And I just wanna take some time and answer as many lingering questions for people as possible, and then express my gratitude to. Hutchinson's staff, council, and the general public, so. Here we go, Charlotte and I, along with our four young children, will be moving to South Dakota next month. This decision was made after much prayer and supplication to God. Trusting God's plan and will in our lives is not always easy, but as people of faith, we feel it is required of us as Christians to follow his calling. This will allow Charlotte to stay home with our children, which we are entirely grateful for, and I will continue to work outside the home. Although I do not know exactly what my next job will be, I will continue to serve the Lord through a different vocation in time. I wanna first finish strong what I started here in Hutchinson before seeking employment elsewhere. So it's a timeline, we talked about this, uh we've already accepted an offer on our home in Hutchinson, our closing Friday, July sixteen. Um and so I'll be resigning my last day of active service to the great people of Hutch will be Thursday, July fifteen, twenty twenty one. In light of tonight's conversations about filling a vacancy on city council, I also wanna take this opportunity to express my feelings, thoughts, and opinions. As to how this seat should be filled, I believe the proper course of action should be to fill my seat with an individual that mirrors. And shares some of the thoughts, beliefs, and conservative values that I have. After all, I, like the rest of you on this council, was elected to this position for a reason. I feel it would be inappropriate and unfair to the voters who filled this seat. To appoint anyone who has a clear history of or has clearly demonstrated opposite standings and representations from my own. I also know and am aware, as most of Hutchinson is by now, that some of my actions, actions. Have been seen as controversial or inappropriate by some individuals, and I wanna address that as well. First, I, like each of the rest of you on this council, sworn oath to support and uphold the Constitution of the United States. I have honored that oath and taken it very seriously, I have never supported, voted for. Or participated in anything that directly or indirectly went against the Constitution. My oath to in support of the Constitution of the United States trumps any city policy, state mandate or federal recommendation. I hope and pray that the person appointed to fill my seat on this council is an individual that shares my passion for life, liberty, justice and freedom. Secondly, and to be perfectly clear, I would love nothing more than to stay here and fulfill my term, but as stated earlier. Faith and family come first, I love this community and I love having had the opportunity to serve it in this capacity. And I'm sorry for having to resign and wish only the best to everyone. Finally, on a separate note entirely, I wanna commend and congratulate all the high school seniors that graduated last Friday. To those heading off to college in the fall, I commend you and congratulations, to those entering the workforce, commend you and congratulations. To those who don't know what they're gonna do yet, I commend you and congratulations and encourage you to have conversations. Listen to people and try new things as you find your way, and also to those seniors who participated in the photo handoff at graduation, I commend you. And your silent actions were heard louder than you know, congratulations on a job well done, that's it for me tonight, thank you, everyone, my family and I are grateful.
Thanks, Brandon. I just meant the chatterbox. Thanks, uh Chad.
I don't have anything to add.
Matt? Just a couple of things to note, uh bid opening is this Thursday for um bids in the police station, so we should have a. Pretty good idea and where we're at with that, and then one, I guess reminder for the council, if you're interested, I know the League of Minnesota Cities is having their annual meeting virtually. This year, that's June twenty third to twenty fifth, if it's something you guys are interested in signing up for and or. Anticipating in, just kinda let me know and I get you registered for that, so.
Thanks, Matt, um uh you know, Mary, Mary kinda. Approached me and asked, thought, or actually announced it to the council that she thought that there should be more flags at. Oakland Cemetery, so when Mary hollers at me, I do something, so actually. I had John Olson uh look into it, so uh this is what he sent back to me. Um there are flags at the two west en- entrances to Oakland Cemetery, one set was donated by Cory Hanson family. The other by Robert Deal family, there are also two flags installed flanking the columbarium. Much of the cost was donated by the American Legion. Flag poles are placed immediately behind the eight foot columns. Because of the configurations, flags are not put at half staff, instead, morning streamers are placed at flags. When flags are ordered to half staff, long term plans is to install flags at the remaining three entrances. To the main Oakland Cemetery sign, to complete this project, the cost would be about six thousand dollars. So I'm wondering if uh we can find six thousand dollars to complete this project.
Well, here was my, here was my thought since I got this little ball rolling, I mean, it is our cemetery. And sits in our city, and every time I go there, I notice that there's only flags on the one end. And I brought it up to Gary cuz I said, you know what, there should be flags at every entrance to our cemetery, we are honoring our veterans. We are honoring all the people that are laid there, and it should be a part of our city, so. I'm making that suggestion that, I know Andy's not here tonight, my nanny kinda holds a purse strings, but.
I think we can find six thousand dollars, so.
But I think we can do it as a group.
Yeah.
I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but. There's nothing more beautiful when you drive by a cemetery and the flags are flying.
Very true. Is there any way that we could uh get the public involved in that uh process, or is that a? Um a known or is that a possibility?
I mean, I think you, you put the word out there, if somebody wants to come forward and generously donate something and we all, you know, designate towards that project, we would gladly do that. Um I think we can easily find six thousand dollars uh um to do that as well, if we want as a council, and so. I'll talk with John about, you know, maybe putting something together for more formal plan to have you guys act on that, that'd be fine, so.
Alright, thank you.
With that, adjournments are adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion uh by Chad, second by Mary to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.